I think we have a quorum, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call here. Charlie?
Here.
Luke?
Present.
Ethan?
Present.
Hope? I don't see Hope. How about Matt Bullock? Okay, I don't see Matt either. Of course, I'm, I'm present. So to start off the meeting, you guys, and it's suggested that we, that our, bylaws require us to elect periodically a chairperson and a co-chair. I don't know, is that we need a secretary, but, you know, I've been the chairperson for a while. I'd be happy to pass it off if anyone wants to nominate somebody. But, yeah, we should, we should take care of this business before, before moving on. And do we have a co-chair at the moment? I forget.
I think Ethan.
Ethan's our co-chair.
Right, for 2021, so we'd just be looking for appointments for 2022.
Ethan, would you like to be a chairperson for 2022?
I wouldn't object to that.
Well, I'd like to nominate Ethan Kirk as chairperson for 2022.
Do you have a nomination first for chair first, please?
That's what I'm saying, for chairperson.
Oh, for chairman?
Yeah, I'd like to hand it off.
Okay.
I second that motion. Can we nominate more than one person?
Yes, you can make as many nominations as you, as you would like.
Okay, well, then I'll also, I'll nominate Luke.
Luke, how do you feel about that?
I'd accept that.
Well, I'll second that nomination for Luke to be chairperson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Luke, why don't you start that next meeting?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Sure, yep.
And we'll need a chairperson. Luke, how do you feel about that? I mean, sorry, Ethan.
Yeah, I would accept.
Okay. Well, I'll nominate Ethan to be chairperson.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, unless anyone else wants it. Charlie?
I'm good. I was chair for several years.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor of Ethan Kirk being nominated to chairperson?
Aye.
Aye. So nominated? Thanks, thanks, fellas. Appreciate that. Just wanted to mention a new addition to the board as an alternate, Matt Bullock. And I'm not seeing Matt on here yet, but I'm assuming he got the agenda, but I know he doesn't always check his email. So I'm gonna go ahead and text Matt, see if he can join us.
I also called him about an hour ago and left him a message, so I did, I did try to reach out to him as well.
Well, Matt is a capable builder, and I'm sure he'll be a welcome addition to the board. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda tonight? We're gonna be discussing code adoption, and then we have a few other miscellaneous items. Anne, would you be willing to scroll down?
On my phone.
So we'll be talking mostly about coded option and the process to help make that a smoother transition. I know that's on everybody's mind. And we have some, some help here from Shum's Coda and Associates as well, so they're gonna be a great resource. Thanks, thanks to y'all for joining us. And then a couple of things about contractor registration fees and inspection reviews as new business. So without hearing any objections to this agenda, maybe we could dive right into the code adoption. Anne, am I missing anything?
No, I think that, you know, just wanting to do the new seats for the board, that's great. Of course, everybody is aware that Paul is no longer with our process, but Dan is with us this evening, and we to just assist us so that, you know, we can continue moving forward. So just to let everybody know, if you have any questions, you need support through this process, reach out to me anytime, I'm here to support this. So just an acknowledgement of that. Thank you, Cameron.
Thanks so much, Anne. We really appreciate everything you're doing and thanks for being here. And is that Hope Medina's on the call as well? So Hope is an excellent resource as well.
Let her know that when the meeting was, and I'm not sure that she was able to make it yet.
Oh, I'm right here.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, I'm here, and it's good to see you all. Miss your faces.
Expected you to be wearing a green shirt.
Next time.
So just to give everyone a heads up here, too, we are gonna try and end by six o'clock, just to give staff the, you know, ability to go home, and all of us are probably gonna be tired by then as well. I know everyone's pretty busy, so we'll try and hard, have a hard close at six. And Anne and I talked about maybe an additional two meetings after this, so that we can have a little back and forth and really, really get this resolution dialed in and also presented to the building community before we, you know, make our recommendation to the county commissioners. So that's kind of the game plan here, and hopefully that recommendation of the county commissioners will come in March. So we're probably looking to hold two more meetings, probably every other week between now and March to get this done. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to Dan. Dan, if you're ready to go, here, here it is. If you want to just talk to us a little bit about it.
And do you want me to, I have, I have a doc, there, you have it right there. Yep, see, look at you, all prepared, okay. So would you like me to just kind of go, go down through this, Anne, and talk about what we did and why we did it and that type of thing?
That'd be great. You know, anything that stands out to you in particular as being important.
Okay, well, I think this will go pretty quick, because most of these are kind of small. And I better put my glasses on here. So just at the top, I crossed out the old resolution number. We basically just took the old resolution and made adjustments to it as we went along. So figured whatever we had was good unless we heard that there was a problem with something that we had. And I also made some of the changes based on notes that Paul had had with meetings with you previously and different things. So it's been kind of cleaned up, but there could be a couple more cleanups as we go, so. So the first one here, basically this item D here under roles and responsibilities is that the board, roles and responsibilities of the board of review make special exceptions to the terms of the building code, and I thought it might, you know, it might just be helpful to say, as requested by the building official, I mean, you guys probably aren't typically asked to just make some exception out of the blue unless something from Anne would come up and would have a meeting and a talk about it. So just trying to clarify that it makes special exceptions as requested by the building official. Okay, so changed all of the previous adoption numbers from the 2012 edition to the 2018 edition. And let's see. Resolution 9743 provides, oh, there was the word that shouldn't be in there, provides for a county board of review, which shall remain in full force, just trying to kind of clean up the English there a little bit. Okay, so then we go to the IBC, and we crossed out 2012 and put in the 2018. And the effective date there, the resolution shall be and is declared to be adopted and in full force and effect, and I just crossed out the old dates from there about eight years ago. And, and we can either say it's effective date, to me, that kind of clarified it. We don't know exactly the date right now that we're gonna be effective, so it's just kind of easier to say from its effective date.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is Luke. I just had a note when we were talking through this originally, where this might be a place to add an exception for work permitted under former codes under 2012.
We have a section for that, Luke, coming up. Yeah, hold on to that thought, because there's, there's gonna be a paragraph down here where we allow work on a place done on a previous code. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's exactly it, thank you.
Okay, so that'll be coming up, so hold that thought, and we'll, we'll find that shortly. Okay. So under electrical there, you can see the red lettering, so just crossed out the 2014 NEC and, and just changed, rather than adopting a certain electrical code, in the times that we've helped other jurisdictions adopt their codes, we just said something like the National Electrical Code currently adopted by the state of Colorado. That way, you don't have to go back to, you know, approvals every year or every three years when, when the NEC gets adopted. So just trying to simplify that. Okay, yeah, that, the next line there is under item four, you can see red lettering there. This is the section 105.2 of the International Residential Code that would exempt some, some work. So you can see there, the following work will not require permit. Drywall less than 200 square feet, we just left that in, so I guess that's been the case there for quite a while. Window replacements that don't require a change of headers or structural members. They haven't required permits for that. Deck's less than 30 inches in height. And, and they had one on there, number four, that was replacement of exterior siding. And after discussion, Paul had wanted to say, no, we want a permit for exterior siding. But if you're replacing only 200 square feet of insulation, you know, then we'll, we'll let you get by without a permit on that. So that was the thinking there was siding probably needs a permit, tiny little bits of insulation are fine without a permit.
I agree.
Dan, does, does that cover like energy retrofits? So if you were to blow in more insulation into your attic, you know, say it's a thousand square foot attic, and you want to go from R19 to R49, we're gonna have to pull a permit for that?
Well, I mean, I guess you could decide. If you're just upgrading your insulation, Hope, what, does the code say anything specific about an upgrade of insulation like that? Well, you're muted.
Sorry. When it talks about any type of alterations or what have you, if you have an existing cavity, a wall cavity, it doesn't have anything in there, it's just required to fill the cavity, so I I think in this instance, if there, as Cameron noted, they're just adding some more insulation to where it already existed, and it's less than 200 square feet, I think that, I mean, I think that it would still be okay, and it wouldn't contradict what's in chapter five.
But if you had a whole attic, you know, a thousand square foot attic, and you're adding six inches of insulation, seems like that would be part of a permit.
What about if you're drilling and blowing into wall cavities as a retrofit where you can't actually inspect that very well?
Do you have a lot of, of the drilling and blowing going on? So in that instance, I think for the exception there that is the insulation installation that's less than the 200 square feet, you might want to expand on that a little bit, and, and because are you talking about if it's less than 200, so you don't want it to be each stud cavity is obviously less than 200 square feet. So if they're doing five of them, then they wouldn't need to get a permit for it. But, you know, typically you would probably get a permit for something like that, so I'm, I, I might suggest explaining why or how this requirement would be implemented.
Yeah, I think the original idea was just, you know, somebody's doing a small little small little addition or remodel, and they got less than, you know, you got a wall that's 10 by 20 or less. You know, do we even want to call the inspector out for that and, and slow down your work? I think was kind of the whole thing was, yeah, let's, let's not get too picky here for a small little area.
Yeah, part of the intention, I think, was that in line with the drywall, so if someone doesn't have to pull a permit for 100 feet of drywall, then we shouldn't have to have them pull a specific permit just for the insulation there.
Absolutely.
I wonder if there's, if you've seen anything where there's an exemption from requiring a permit for addition of insulation, if you're, if you're adding insulation to an existing cavity or exterior, whatever. Is that something to consider? Just a blanket.
To consider having it not, not permitted, you mean?
Yeah, and obviously, if, you know, in any construction where there is no insulation, you're, you're now putting insulation. I would think that need to be permitted, but in these retrofit situations where you're, you know, the examples would be like the attic, the drill and blow in the cavities or extra your foam. I, I wouldn't be against exempting those situations from getting a permit since.
I wonder if, if, you know, when you're doing, when, when you're doing siding and you're putting styrofoam on, right? You know, you didn't have it before, you're doing that. You're trying to bring up that thermal envelope to a certain R value. Now, what do you guys think? Do you think that, that it should be verified that that's there or, or not?
So, I mean, there are issues with rigid exterior insulation and the type of attachment and then the siding. You know, there's kind of structural issues with that. You know, my concern is that weatherization agencies do a lot of this work, and you know, I, in the past, the county has waived the fees for low-income weatherization. So, you know, I would encourage that to continue. And if, if we are indeed requiring permits, I don't know if you all have seen permits pulled from weatherization agencies for, certainly they would do it for mechanical work. But I don't want to get too bogged down in this, but maybe this is one of those things we can revisit later if it is an issue as a special exemption from the building official.
Maybe what you list that is, is, you know, as an exception, is insulation installation less than 200 square feet for existing buildings. And then that way, if it's, because that's the intent, it sounds like you're trying to use it, if it's an existing building, and they're trying to put in a little bit of, you know, more insulation, maybe that's the way to go, it kind of clarifies it, so. Just a thought.
That hope?
At the end of it, that it's insulation installation, less than 200 square feet for existing buildings.
I don't know that that's what they were talking, I mean, to me, okay, yeah, I guess you do an addition or you're doing a remodel, that's, that's an existing building, is that, is that what you mean? Because I think the fellows are talking about what if we want to increase the amount of insulation, you know, in an attic, for instance?
Well, but it would be an existing building.
I think you could almost say add to that installation installations, insulation installations, less than 200 square feet. And addition of insulation in existing buildings? Because I wouldn't want to.
I see.
I wouldn't want to exempt existing buildings completely, because you know, there's certainly a big remodel.
That's where you get your.
But.
Yeah.
Additional insulation or improvement of.
Insulation in existing buildings. Some fine tuning there, but I think that's the idea.
Let's make a note on that, and we'll fine tune it. That'll be our homework between now and the next meeting, just so we don't get too bogged down on this one issue.
Okay, we'll move, move along here. So the next area in red there. So this is under the, you know, when should the building official require plans and specs to be designed and stamped by an engineer or architect? And, and number one, two, and three remain the same. If you've got foundations with caissons or some, something other than a spread footing, if you've got roof framing or wall framing, that's something other than standard stuff. All buildings, pretty much all buildings that are commercial, I noticed when I went through that, that I was missing institutional hospitals, jails. Of course, we want that done by an architect or engineer, so I added the word I after H. And then, and then he just kind of wanted a catch-all in number four that, you know, I mean, you guys turn in pretty good plans from what I hear, but, but sometimes you just get a builder that turns in, can I just say, kind of a piece of crap? And, and it looks really bad, and the information isn't there. And, and when you start looking at it, you know, Jerry or someone's trying to do a plan review or hope, and, you know, it's just severely lacking, then, you know, it's time to go back to him and say, hey, you need to hire a professional to turn in your plans. So that was kind of the sentence that was the catch-all. If you just, in the judgment of the building official, they see something that's just pretty bad and doesn't give the information that's needed.
And Dan, I would just clarify too, that the majority of those kind of plans that we receive are plans received from owner builds moreover than the ones that we receive from contractors. So I think it's really important to highlight and make sure you know, that, that, that's, you know, one of the tools in our toolbox for those kinds of models. And I think Jerry is well aware of that as well.
Okay, and it's a hard thing to do, because you're asking a homeowner who's trying to do it all himself, and, you know, and, and he's drawing stuff up on a napkin, and you get it, and you just go, can you give me some more detail here? Draw this to scale, and it comes back not looking much better, and you go, you know, ma- maybe in order to make this work, you probably ought to get a an architect on it, or, or a designer at least, you know. But this does say designed and stamped by an engineer or architect, so.
So let me just look for some clarification. First of all, on number four there, when you say a professional drafts person, that, that does not indicate a licensed design professional. Is that the intent that you're not necessarily requiring an architect or an engineer, but you want somebody that?
Yes, that was how I worded it, to try and be nice, you know, to try and say, you know, me, if it's, if it's typically for a homeowner, which Anne says it is, at, at least go down to the draftsman guy who, who doesn't have a stamp, and he's used to drawing, you know, quarter inch per foot scale and, and, and drawing it nice and putting the information on there. At, at least do that, and maybe you don't have to pay for, you know, the architect, engineer, or architect that stated up in the, in the top heading there. So engineer or architect in that heading would apply to one, two, and three. And then number four would say, at least, at least give me a drawing from, from a drafts person, you know.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable for you guys? You know, we're, we're just, just so that you can do a review.
The problem we're having here, Dan, is they do a homeowner build, and it's a second home, and the homeowner is 1,000 miles away in New Jersey or something. And then as soon as the, we go through, walking through them with the homeowner build situation and show them extra attention, showing them how to do it. In three months, it's up for sale, or it's up, is it Airbnb, or it's a, you know, a short-term rental of some sort.
Yeah, well, I mean, hopefully it met the code, right? You know, I mean, they're gonna turn it over and, and someone else is gonna, but.
Well, with that said, too, our snow load here exceeds 75 pounds in most places.
Yeah, if you've got a snow load 75 pounds or greater, you're not gonna find a table in in the code that handles that, so at least that aspect needs to be done by an architect or an engineer who can design that.
And then everybody is using the I-joist engineered lumber, which falls into another category of needing engineering as well.
Right, and the I-joist companies all provide pre-engineered tables for all of their products, so, so I, I've always allowed people to use their, their flyer, you know, TGI or BSG.
With that tied together with the over 75 pound snow load, I mean, the exceptions that they cannot have engineer should be rare. But still, Anne can make that decision as we've been going on, as we have.
Okay, so do you guys on the board feel that it's necessary to add another item that would say, you know, when, when snow load tables from the code are exceeded, or, or, or just anything that the IRC exceeds, because we already have a section in chapter one that says it, it can be any time the building official requires it, so.
So this has been kind of a hot topic for a few of these meetings, just because it's, it's been unclear for, for years, I think for a lot of us. One thing that we discussed was, I guess, just if someone can show that they've done their homework, even if they're not a licensed engineer, whether it's the tables, or also there's, you know, there's a lot of different software put out by the lumber manufacturers that can show that, that you have.
I think that due diligence is what we're looking for. We're not necessarily looking for the stamp, we're looking for the due diligence.
Absolutely, yeah. I guess, how do we?
I'm inclined to agree with that, Jerry, and, and hopefully when it says it must be designed and resubmitted by a professional drafts person, does that take care of the due diligence?
Well, I mean, every situation is different. We can't just put a, you know, wet towel over this whole fire. It's one of these things that Matt, our new alternative, he's a draftsman, and so is Luke. And I accept their work a lot of times because they do get an engineer for their beams or posts and anything that's out of the IRC. So they've done their due diligence. But I get other people that just, you know, don't even mention snow load.
And I will say that there are, I think, people who are paid drafts people out there that don't do any of that homework, that don't do that due diligence, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm really torn on this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's gotta be a case-by-case decision.
Yeah, so of course.
The proficiency of the plans is a big big plus mark. I mean, if they're good plans, they match what I see as conventional building. That's not a problem.
Right.
But whenever we get into a situation like a heavy snow load or something, or something out of the ordinary, and it's got to have an engineer.
Right, typically, the, the IRC works as a, as one book that supposed to work for everything we're doing on a house. If it's outside of the confines of the IRC, then it should be designed by an engineer or an architect. Someone with the background to do that. I was looking through chapter one here to see what it said, because I thought there was a section that said that the, that the building official could make that decision. That the building official could make that decision. As to when. Documents need to be. Sent out. I'm not. Right now.
Can I make a suggestion? Could we ask building staff to think about that one and make us a recommendation next meeting?
Well, I think the recommendation be a ton of case by case this or case by case issue.
Right, well, let's let Anne and you guys discuss that and bring bring back how you kind of want to do it. At the next one.
But just to be clear. The way. Because Luke draws a lot of plans for me, Tim Bliss draws a lot of plans for me. And and they use span tables or whatever their resources are. So and then anytime we do run into. Irregularities, we always have an engineer verify whatever we need to. To to move forward, you know, in a professional manner.
Right.
That's acceptable.
Absolutely, that would be acceptable in in my view, Charlie, and 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 then, but I would also say that we probably have builders and Anne would know. Who don't aren't concerned about doing that. And would want to make sure that they're doing the same thing that you guys are choosing to do as your professionals.
Great, great. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, you know. How far reaching the the engineering thing kind of extends is.
Yeah, if you if you follow the IRC and there's tables all throughout for all kinds of different things, as you know, and you follow that, then no engineer needed, you know. When when you start getting beyond what the IRC says, then it's like, okay, now we have a snow load that's greater than the tables. So, you know, someone needs to look at that aspect of it and stamp that paper. But the rest of it, we can follow span tables and everything if if they they were. You know, for the areas.
Yeah, and I have seen some pretty interesting drawings, too, you know, look like napkin drawings, literally. So I. Where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding. Number one. So it says any foundation other than spread footings, would that include monolithic slabs as well?
Yeah, monolithic slabs are provided in the IRC, I believe.
Yes, they are. Just the wording, it seems to contradict that because it says on caissons or any other.
Right, foundations are constructed on caissons or or any other method other than. You know, spread footings, we we could put monolithic slabs in there or any other method. Other than in the IRC. How about that?
Sure, yeah.
Don't ask.
Well.
We don't generally. Oh, go ahead, Jerry.
We don't ask for your soil tests here. And so the spread footing. And the monolithic slabs is covered in the IRC. But the main thing they're talking about there is screwed piers. Or like 30 foot pylons. Or places that are water, clay. Or some other.
I think it's probably just a verbiage issue then with number one, it should just be probably just anything not covered in IRC.
Right, okay, let's let's just switch that wording in number one to. To indicate that then.
Because there are a lot of homes here that should have had engineered caissons. But because of that clause. And we don't get a soils test. We don't know. Where the clay is or where the. Gravel is or where the shale is or. Or the bedrock is.
Now, Jerry, you're you're talking about the foundation for the house, not not a caisson for a deck, right?
Right.
Okay.
Dan, are you keep keeping notes or do or someone make?
I think Anne is, I see her typing away on little things.
Okay.
John's taking notes tonight.
Okay, great.
I'm I'm Jerry, I'm actually taking notes on on edits. He's doing minutes.
Oh, okay, I I didn't know. He told me just a few minutes ago he was doing it.
Thank you, Anne.
So while she's making notes on that, let's look at more toward the bottom of the screen that says there's a 109.2 schedule of permit fees. And and there was just.
Sorry, let me just jump in before we leave that. Number three up there under the responsibility for plans. I mean, all those building classifications are. Are not in the IRC, right?
Right, those are pretty much every commercial occupancy.
But I mean, does that? Line even need to be under this section for the IRC in our resolution?
It's a good point, Luke. Really, that line, let's make sure that line is there. We can delete that line from the IRC.
It is down lower.
Yeah. Make sure it's down there. That's a good point. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so 109.2 schedule of permit fees and it says fee shall be provided for in appendix A. And I just put of this resolution, we're in the IRC and later will be in the IBC section. And when it says appendix A, the reader would assume you're talking about appendix A of the IRC or appendix A of the IBC. And we're not, we're talking about the appendix A of this resolution. So there's, I I've just clarified that language throughout a few spots there, too. Because it confused me when it said, oh, fee shall be provided for an appendix A. So I went to the code and looked at an appendix A and it wasn't about fees. Oh, okay, of the resolution.
Very good.
Okay, refunds. This was up for discussion. This was in the notes that Paul had had about. Building official may authorize refunding not more than used to say 80% of the permit fee when no work had been done and the permit was issued and they made the request within six months. And then he's he had 90%, question mark, and so I put it in based on his notes only. And then he thought about it afterwards and he goes, you know, if it's 90%, why don't we, you know, we may as well just be giving it all back. There needs to be something for staff time and refunding. Things and sending it through the the staff there. So his thought was, let's leave that at 80. Certainly up to to you guys to to throw your two cents in there on that. But there were half a dozen spots where I did that and have no problem with sending that back to 80.
Yeah, I would, Paul and I talked about this and and, you know, I absolutely concur with the majority of all. Fees not being held within the department and to cover administrative cost. Of the department. So I, he and I both talked about this and Anne felt that it should stay at 80%.
Time is money, I support that.
You guys will see that in a few spots as we go down through, because it gets repeated in each of the codes. Okay, next red line there, again, appendix D of the resolution, no big deal there. Next page. Temporary occupancy. Temporary certificate of occupancy is valid for, used to say 90 days, TCO for 90 days. And we were talking about changing that to 30 days with a renewal of 30 days permitted at the discretion of the building official. Some reason why work couldn't get done, weather, whatever. So I don't recall Anne why, if there was something that had happened that we were basing that on, or if it was a better way to do it. I know some places say, we'll give you a TCO, we'll charge you. Here's an example, City of Trinidad says, we'll charge you $750 for a TCO. You really want in and you're not done, you're going to pay $750. If within 30 days you. You get that done and we can call us out and we check it all off and yep, you're done, then we'll give back 500 bucks of that. So it's an incentive to, let's get going on this, let's let's get it done. Because so many times and I've worked for so many different jurisdictions and helped several. You give a TCO and you never hear from them again, then you're at the end of the date and you so you got to renew it and. And what are you going to do? Kick them out, you know, and now you got a real mess and let's just incentivize getting it done. So that was, that was one idea. And so I think in this case, he's he's trying to shorten that time.
Yeah, TCOs are always problematic for us and, you know, we're always trying to get folks to CO and avoid TCO if we can. And I I do think, you know, in as much as I really like that incentive idea, Dan, my my concern is just adding one more layer of administrative. Burden on, you know, on a on our, we always call it our small but mighty department. And so that.
I like that.
The administrative, you know, thought of having to do those refunds and issue checks and send that to accounting. So I think the 30 days was meant to be an incentive. We do charge currently $150 for those and typically. This past year, those have been because of material shortages or the inability to get something. So those are the ones that have been negotiated. They are contracts. And there are some remedies within them. Obviously, like you said, it's it's not very fluid to kick somebody out. And and we want to avoid that at all costs. So I think the 30 days in itself is meant to be an incentive and and the 90 days, so it doesn't fall off and and. You know, we don't move forward within enforcing it. And that's that's what Paul and I had discussed.
Okay, great. So that sound reasonable to you guys then? So you get 30 days for a TCO and then if there's, you know, then you go to the building official and say. Well, I just can't get my supplies in. Can you give me one more renewal of 30 days?
The only thing I'd say is in this current situation, that 60 days. Might not get you windows. I mean, we're dealing with the situation at the Episcopal Church now where the kitchen equipment, some of it's out until June. And that's when we'd be able to get our CO, even though we're going to be looking for a TCO. The next week or so. So those kind of situations be tough and I feel like there might be some administrative burden on on tracking. The 30 days initially and then the next 30 days and then what happens?
Yeah, one thing I've done in several cases before, too, just another option is. Obviously, all your life safety stuff is done, you know, that that had to be done in order to get your TCO. But then remove those items. Let's say, I don't know, your Episcopal church, for example, what, give me, give me an idea what items are are left.
So really, it's it's kitchen equipment primarily, so.
Okay.
All the finishes, safety items, and then we're also waiting on Excel energy for spring for them to replace the power for permanent power.
So one thing I've done is 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 said to staff, okay, make a permit for the items that are remaining for kitchen equipment. Let's just make a new permit, start fresh, issue a permit. He's already paid his fees, you know, based on the other permit, maybe unless you needed. Administrative fee for it. And then we can close out the old permit and you're running on a new permit, it's good for six months, right? You know, that type of thing.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, it's a good way to go about it.
Okay, so we'll leave that tool in Anne's box and. And move on from there.
Can I ask one question? Going back a little ways where the question came up on number three. The listed item number three that listed all the other occupancies that you're going to find. On the IBC.
Yeah.
Was that in reference because or put that in there because of the new section of 101.2, the scoping that lists? Like live work. Units can now be built out of the IRC. And that's why those were placed in it?
I think that was my mistake, actually. I thought we were talking about the IRC, but I see now we're we're in the IBC right now, so.
Oh, okay.
Section three should be left in, yeah.
Okay, I I just was trying to. Claire, thank you so much. I apologize for deterring things there.
Nice job, Luke. I'm glad you know what book we're in here. I do think we've got it duplicated, but anyway, we'll we'll know when when we get there. And you're right, Hope, if it was in the IRC, then at least an R2, because a live working, it's called an R2, so we would need that. Although it's supposed to happen inside your dwelling unit, so I don't know if you've got to have that stamped or not. Okay, so let's see, where are we? We talked about 80, 90%. We talked about just of this resolution for clarity, okay, temporary occupancy, 30 days, we talked about that. Oh, address identification, it was just an old section number there, cleaned up section. Let's see, special inspection, this was this was kind of a little bit different. So special inspector 90151 says. All fire protection systems required by this chapter shall be inspected and approved by a special inspector. Okay, so. You know, chapter 17 of the IBC has all of the things like masonry and steel and concrete and all of that that special inspectors have to do and. And apparently, fire protection systems. Are here placed into that. I thought the fire department just did them, but anyway, the inspector shall be an employee of the fire department, having jurisdiction or another qualified individual prior approval of the building official. Inspections and approvals, it used to say will be regulated under chapter 17 of the code and and I thought to myself, what's that mean? You can turn to chapter 17 and how do you regulate it? Well, but the only regulation there is is. That this special inspector documents what he looks at and submits it to the building official. So that's just what I wrote. Inspections and approval shall be documented and submitted. Just trying to clear up the meaning a little bit so that people would know what to do with it. Chapter 13, interior environment. Changed the old date from 2006. Looks like that one had been left alone and forgotten last time. Change that to the 2018 code. Snow loads again, appendixy of this resolution. Chapter 29, plumbing system, so. 2901.1 scope. The wording changed slightly, so it went from the fourth sentence to the third sentence. International private sewage disposal code. You guys don't use that code, so we're basically just deleting the sentence there that talks about the international private sewage disposal code. Back when we were on a previous code, chapter 34 of the IBC had a chapter or was the chapter for existing buildings, existing structures. Now, the codes have changed over the years and current code have that chapter anymore. They got rid of that and put it all into the IABC. And you know, we're adopting the IABC, of course, and so that, all of that information is now in there. So we don't need this old section, which is why you. Lines through it all. It's just getting rid of a chapter that's no longer there. Okay, international residential code changed from 2012 to 2018. Here's that section, I think you were talking about Luke, under scope. Existing buildings undergoing repair, alterations, or additions and change of occupancy. Shall be permitted to comply with the IRC 2012, which is the one you're on right now, right? The 2012 edition, if the work was originally permitted within one year of the adoption of the 2018 edition, so. If we adopt this in March, then, you know, if the work was permitted within the last year. Then you could continue to do that with the 2012. Pretty nice gimme there, really, I think for builders.
So is there a line similar to this one in the in the IBC section in our resolution or do we need to? Consider that?
There was not. Can we scroll back up to 101.2 in the IBC? Way up top. 101.2.
Oh, yeah, it is there, anyway.
Oh, what? Now, that's the effective date of the. Yeah, we we didn't, looks like we didn't allow that under IBC, only under homes. So. You know, your guys' and Anne's decision as to. If if you want to allow that gimme there in a commercial building. you know, your guys' and Anne's decision as to, uh, if, if you want to allow that gimme there in a commercial building.
Yeah, I feel like that could be a bit of a battle. Um, if someone did pull their permit under the former code and then had to, had to do a lot of changing to make it meet the, the new code. So.
Yeah, so it would only be required to, to make meet the code, the part you're actually doing. So you don't have to take the rest of the building and bring it up to code ever, only the part that you're altering. So whatever, you know, if you, you got, you're altering the stairs, then those stairs have to meet the code, but not the rest of the building.
I was under the impression that. Hold on. I'm sorry, who's that?
Sorry, this is Ethan. I was under the impression that permits pulled before this adoption were, were under twenty twelve. Is that what we're discussing right now?
Right, you're on the twenty twelve codes right now, right? And we're talking about adopting the eighteen and that section we were reading in the IRC just said, hey, we'll give you one, the year before the adoption will give one year to do work to continue instead of doing it on the eighteen, to continue on the twelve. If you permitted that work within the last year.
Okay, so if you pulled a permit before we adopt in March, say you're, are you're on twenty twelve regardless, this is just forward, like, pushing that into the future one year.
Yeah, I guess. So let's say you, you pulled a permit for something on a house last July and you had, and then, and you did the work and now we adopt the twenty eighteen in March. Well, it's been within a year. So, um, you would be allowed to, to do the work under the two thousand and twelve, but for some reason you, you wanted to, uh, it, first time I've ever seen that clause. Uh, don't know how it got there.
I guess I would be concerned, you know, big commercial project going on a school or something, if they were under the two thousand and twelve when they permitted it and then it switched, that could be a huge burden for them to.
Oh, no. No, that wouldn't. So when you, uh, let's just use that example. When you issue a permit for a hospital, let's say, yeah, millions of dollars. And, and it gets issued under the two thousand and twelve and then you change codes. Those code changes, the new code only applies to newly issued permits at that point. So, uh, if you've got, as long as you've got a permit and good standing and you're making progress and everything on that old code, you continue to use that old code.
Okay. And then you don't think we need to, something's.
Well, let's get, yeah, I kind of want to hear from Anne because maybe Anne remembers why this is there or what happened.
You know, uh, Dan, I'm not, but I will, I, I have to say that the message that we've been putting out from this department is committed, the twelve code will be allowed to continue under the twelve code. Um, and so I, I, I will, I just want to make sure that, um, whatever we do is consistent with the message that we've been giving out. So, um, whether it's IBC or IRC is that if you came in, you still are eligible for those two, uh, six uh, month extensions. Um, and so just want to make sure that, you know, however this is written. And I don't, I don't know if that was Paul's suggestion on how to, um, memorialize that, but, uh, he and I both, um, and as, as well as other staff have made those statements to, um, any pending building permits or, or current permits. Um, so I just want to make sure that, that we honor that and just kind of, as you said, Dan.
Yeah, the, the code, the, something is, if, if you build a hospital and takes you three years to build it and you issue that under the two thousand and twelve, for example, it stays on that code until you get a CO. You know, and, and the same way with a house. If you build a house under the two thousand and twelve and oop, we change the code. That only applies to any new permits that you might pull on that house. And I would have to search around for where the code says that, but that's what it, that's, that's the intent of how the code works is, is, um, you, you aren't.
No, you're right on. You're right on that, Dan.
Yeah, nothing's retroactive unless the code says it's retroactive. Fire department has a couple of retroactive sections, which everybody loves, but, yeah, what, whatever it's issued under, that's what it stays under. Now, if your permit dies and you quit working and, and you know, a year goes by because everybody ran out of money and it's expired, you got to come back in, you know, now you need to go through a plan review to make sure it meets the new code. So I'll leave it up to Anne about, you know, uh, back down under the IRC there where we had that sentence. I'm not sure if that was, you know, kind of the attempt to clarify this or, or not, but I, um, let's see, yeah, it was right there. Uh, up to one oh six, uh, right there, one oh one point two. Existing buildings undergoing repair alterations, traditions and change of occupancy shall be permitted to comply with the international residential code. I mean, if you want to state what we're talking about, I would get rid of all, most of that wording and just clarify that, that, uh, current existing permits. We will remain on, on the code in effect when they were pulled. You know, find some good wording for that, but, um, but that is how it works.
I would say if, if we can find where that is in the code now, I'm pretty confident, like you say, Dan, that it's in there, then I, I don't think we need that exception. We could just point to the code section that says it.
Okay, so let me just give myself some homework to look that up for you and I'll send it to Anne to help out.
Yeah, if it doesn't really contribute anything, it seems best for it to go away.
Right. Okay. Uh, right, so let's see, we, um, no changes on anything there. Let's scroll down some more and, okay. Um, so work exempt from permit. Oop, here we go. Nope, back up. Right, nope, not that part. Whoa, it's going fast. We were in. Are we in the IBC there? No, we're, we need to, yeah, scroll down till we get to IRC. Pass that. There we go. There's IRC. Okay, whoa, right there. Um, so one oh five point two, again, work exempt from permit. Yeah, okay, so we don't have all of those, those, um, uh, commercial, um, places in here now. Drywall under two hundred square feet, also in the IRC. Insulation, less than two hundred square feet. So you want to put that same note from the, you know, from above into this spot probably. Window replacement, construction of decks, less than thirty inches.
The only thing I would say, it's a silly thing, but we might have to say thirty inches in height from grade or.
Well, you know, the thing is, there's a section on this, and if we go to one oh five point two, it says, it's kind of long and wordy, but so it's not just thirty inches. The code as it's written, item number ten in one oh five point two says, decks not exceeding two hundred square feet in area that are not more than thirty inches above grade at any point and are not attached to a dwelling and do not serve the exit door. So that's pretty restrictive. So if you've got a house that's, that, sorry, if you've got a deck that's bolted to your house, it would not be exempted. If you, you would have to have a separate deck, not attached to the house, it would have to be less than two hundred square feet. It'd have to be less than thirty inches above grade and it couldn't serve the main exit door, front door typically. Then it would be exempt. So, are, are we really? So that was number ten, the last item in the code. Now we're making items eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. I don't know that fourteen's doing us any good because we're saying construction of decks less than thirty inches. Well, that's already in there. Only with more limiting factors. Is there any feeling that this has been too restrictive in the past? And you know, everyone wants to, to get by without a, a permit for this kind of a deck?
I would just mention that I think that's been interpreted as thirty inches regardless of if it's attached to a dwelling unit or not. So.
So it seems like instead of making item fourteen, we should amend item ten that's already in the code. You know, deck's not exceeding two hundred square feet in area that are not more than thirty inches above grade at any point, not attached to a dwelling and don't serve the exit door. There's all these qualifications there. If we don't like all of those qualifications and we just wanted to say, decks, you know, not, uh, decks less than thirty inches are exempt from a permit, then let's change the wording of number ten and, um, and amend that.
Yeah. The wording in number ten really doesn't bother me. I think that's probably the right way to do it. So I would, I'd be inclined to just delete this line fourteen that we have.
I mean, that's certainly the easiest. You know, if it hasn't been an issue. Um, and Jerry, you would know in the field, I guess, who's complaining because they need a permit for a deck.
Well, the one thing that's coming up is now it's not only have to be thirty inches above the ground, but that's got to be five feet away.
Uh, three.
Thirty, thirty-six inches.
Yeah, thirty-six inches away, I think. But, um, but yes, you're right. Um, it's.
And so where I'm at now, everybody's building these decks on the side of a drop off.
Yep, I can't, can't do that if it's within three feet of more than thirty inches. So they need to bring in more dirt or, um.
Landscape or put up guards.
Yeah.
Now, and that's a problem because of the landscaping here. And this is for residential, you're speaking.
Right.
I would like to take, le, eliminate that from the commercial because the commercial decks are even worse because they're adding to that danger. Just because of the conditions here in this landscape.
Well, do you, do you and Anne want to kind of get together over the next couple of weeks and, and talk about wording of, of something in the IBC for decks to make sure you're covered there?
Yes, because if it's a commercial deck, I pretty much want it, uh, find out by an architect for life safety features. Because of a lot of different things going on here.
Well, I'll let you guys work on that one for IBC and.
I'm looking right now in the IBC and I don't see any exemptions for decks whatsoever in the IBC.
You, you just got to have a.
Well, no, I agree with you, but I.
Yeah.
It's in your resolution. It's in your resolution in the IBC in the Lake County resolutions or Leadville.
Yeah, that, yeah. So I think we can strike out that, that exemption in both of them.
Well, yeah. Because with the way things are around here with the ice and snow and everything.
Yeah, there's nothing in the IBC under the, uh, one oh five point two that would get you out of any kind of a deck. The only thirty inch thing is, is, uh, sidewalk.
I think that's in the IBC resolution here.
Okay, well, we'll leave that as homework for you and Anne to talk about and kind of come up with any wording if you want. Um, and, and if you guys feel like it's just easier to delete line fourteen and continue with the existing line ten that's in there. Um, that requires a permit for pretty much all decks. You know, if they're attached to the house, doesn't matter how big, um, you know, they would have to meet all kinds of things before you get an exemption.
And there's a problem here too, because once they build the deck, they think it's going to hold a hot tub.
Well, yeah, there's.
And they don't put up the glazing or the tempered glass.
Yep, well, there's all kinds of code provisions that if you're going to put in a hot tub, uh, if, when you see one or it's on the plan or whatever. Now, if it's not on the plan and they do it, then, um, then they need to get a permit for it.
Well, that's just some of the problems I'm having with decks. So yeah, the thirty inch on the IBC, I'd appreciate to delete that one. Thank you.
Um, all right, one oh six point three point two, previous approvals. Uh, this was, used to be called phased approvals. Um, so then basically what it says now is the previous approvals and the following paragraph at the end of the section. Um, when a permit has been issued for part of a building or structure and the county adopts a new building code, new permits may be issued for the remaining portion of the building or structure under the provisions and requirements of the code in effect at the time, the immediately preceding permit was issued if the remaining permits are issued within a year of the effective date. Okay, so that's a lot clearer than what we were dealing with before. So that's saying that if, if we've got a phased plan and we've issued, you know, the core and shell and now we're going to issue the, the interior remodel of it, as long as that core and shell was permitted within the last year, then you could use the previous code if you wanted to. Yes, that's, might be helpful. Anyway, it's, it's, I'm really not changing it. I'm just changing the name of it from phased to previous approvals. And add the following paragraph at the end of the sec, just trying to clarify it, by it. And within one year of the effective date of the adoption, instead of saying one year of the adoption. It's, it's just clar, clarifying language really.
Um, seeing in the code, there is actually one oh six point three point two is called previous approvals. And then one oh six point three point three is called phased approval.
That's right. That's, that is why I changed it. One oh six three previous approval. So, I don't know how many phased approvals you get in the IRC anyway, you know, I mean, how many house pha- phasings go on, probably don't run into that too much. Um, but this basically says if you had a previous approval and you were under the previous code, as long as that was one year before the adoption, you could continue to do the next little step or, the next portion of it under the previous code.
Okay.
It's still a safe code. It's just had changes. Next paragraph down, same sentence as before, uh, in the IRC this time. Um, yeah, probably need to take item number one. Uh, foundations are constructed on caissons or any other method other than spread footings conforming to the requirements of chapter four. You're going to kind of copy that, your, your perfect wording there and put it in. And then item number five is really the same thing again as before. Plans that in the judgment of the building official are submitted, which are severely lacking in information. Showing compliance with the code must be designed and resubmitted by a professional dress person. So this is the IRC part. The part we were talking about before is the IBC and, um, you know, most of that I assume is going to come in with, uh, an architect stamp on it. Uh, if it meets the requirements of the state as an architect, I mean, that's kind of what it comes down to is, more than ten people, more than certain spans of beams, it's got to be done by.
Yeah, and I did find, um, in both codes, one oh six point one, there's an exception that says that building official is authorized to waive the submission of construction documents prepared by a registered divine professional if it is found that the nature of the work um, is not necessary to obtain compliance with this code. So I think that's kind of our.
That, that's, that section we're kind of looking for, wasn't it? Yeah, where, um, construction documents shall be prepared by a registered design professional. But building officials authorized to waive that. So that's kind of what the building official is doing here is saying, you know, I'm going to waive this if you get me something neat and clean and to scale and try your best and. You know, I'm gonna waive this if you get me something neat and clean and to scale and try your best and do a good job, you know? And give me what I need, otherwise I can't help you, you gotta go spend some money.
So that's the clarification, it's just Jerry's choice on whether, there's no other concrete decisions on that. It's just, he doesn't like the sketch, so he wants planned. I mean, if it's all under any of these sets.
Well, Hope, I think what we're dealing with is, is more of plans that come in that have been pretty bad, haven't they, Anne?
Well, I understand that, but there's no guidelines on the website, what makes a plan bad, it just seems like we submit a plan and at some point in time. Someone makes the decision and there really isn't anything backing it, it just says, hey, this is what you need to get stamped plans. So, I mean, like structural walls, are there any other guidelines other than?
I think that if you can immediately, um, show compliance with the code in a manner in which is supported by the code. Um, and you can evidence that, um, within there, I think it's when there's the discrepancy. And when there's not enough information in the plans to show, um, immediate compliance. And there's substantial information lacking from the plans and there's not a reliance on the knowledge that, that the plans have been drawn under.
Do you guys actually list that? I mean, I never got that when I submitted plans. Um, what was wrong or what needed to be fixed? It was just like a bolt, this is wrong, do this and talk to us later. So that's what I'm curious about, is there any guidelines or anything to know ahead of time, so you're not wasting time waiting for someone to come back to you?
I would say the code, Hope.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that, Anne, if it's not as clear. And I didn't find anything in the code, for my example, that made me need to have stamped dated plans.
I think, are you talking about the commercial use? Your I, your IBC?
No, I'm not talking about commercial use.
So in one oh six point one point one in the IRC. Uh, it says, construction documents shall be of sufficient clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed. And show in detail that it will conform to the provisions of the code and other relevant laws, ordinances, rules and regulations. So I think that's what we're, we're looking for on a typical plan review is show me that the code requirements have been met. With that info on the drawing and as long as we're getting that, we're good. If, if, you know, I mean, you're missing one or two things, that's, that's one thing. But if, if Jerry has to spend so much time on a review from someone that is sort of a waste of his time writing down all the things they're missing. Well, they didn't do a very good job of indicating that the work proposed conforms to the code.
I get that, are we just telling people what it is they're missing, are we just saying no?
I think we just need to point to this section, one oh six point one, one oh six point one point one. And, and the, the long and the short is, the plans need to show compliance to the code, I think that's the, the key.
I understand that, okay, great.
Whenever we do a plan review, we write down, um, uh, you need to provide this item or this item. And we give a code section as, as to why, so that, um, it's, it's a proper review. Now, I just did one today where someone, not in Lake County, turned in a set of plans for a restaurant. It was on four sheets and two of those sheets were site plans. Well, you, you know, it was lacking information, I just gave him a long list, I need plumbing, I need mechanical, I need electrical, I mean, come on, turn in a full set of plans. And, and so that wasn't even really a review, it was just provide full sets of plans.
Yeah, I, I, I hope we're doing that, I'm not sure I'm seeing that, but I hope we're doing that.
Okay, good, good thought, thank you.
I would like to just add there, I would like to see better plans, but that's all I wanted to comment on.
Okay, so we'll go down to temp power. Delete the reference to NFPA seventy and insert national electrical code is adopted and amended by the state of Colorado Electrical Board. Basically, the same thing as we said up in the IBC section. Schedule of permit fees, permit fee shall be as determined by appendix A of this resolution. Okay, then another eighty percent, so we can just unaccept that change, I think, right, Anne, and, and go with it. Okay, sounds good. All right, we're commencing prior to permit issuance. The charge shall be, they used to say twice the normal permit fee for the work being done. Uh, Paul had on his notes up to twice the normal permit fee. My, I wrote it in, cause that's, that's what he had wanted. My input was, well, what is it? Is it twice the normal permit fee or is it up to, you know, I mean, people need to know, what is it? And it should be on the resolution and the fee resolution and it shouldn't be some vague amount, but that was just my two cents.
And I'm glad you brought that up because there has been a lot of work without permit.
Right, so, uh, I mean, to me.
Probably looking to have the ability to have a little discretion in there. Um, but, but I agree with you, Dan, I think that the expectation is set. And, um, work without a permit is, is a double fee.
Yeah. It's kind of pretty standard in every jurisdiction I've worked at is, you know, you start without, uh, your permit and you get a double, a double fee. And, and that whatever we say there needs to match, I mean, my two senses, take that out, but that, that's up to you guys.
I agree with that, I don't want that to be subjective where somebody thinks that they're getting picked on for any reason whatsoever.
Exactly, whatever we do to one, we do to all, right? Case, uh, in the line below, appendix D of the resolution, uh, fixed a couple of code sections there that were off. Um, or from older codes. Didn't change anything there, the blue, the blue stuff, that was. Who did the blue stuff? I, mine was in red. Building officially impose a reinspection fee of code violations are not corrected and required, so it was just.
I have a note from on here, I don't know if you can, I'm not sure if you're seeing my screen with the notes, but, um.
Yes.
Paul has a note that says, R one oh nine point one already exists, how about one oh nine point five or even one oh nine point one point seven? As a type of inspection?
Okay, one oh nine point one point five or other inspections, so one oh nine goes through all the different inspections. Uh, that are required, notice drywall isn't in there, but most jurisdictions put drywall under one oh nine point one point five. Which is other inspections, in addition to the ones listed, the building official has the authority to require any other inspection.
I think this brings up, uh, Jerry had brought up, um, and Jerry, I just wanted to remember that you had mentioned a shower pan inspection. And, um, adding that, and so I just want, I'd actually, you know, right here, even though if it's already covered under other inspections. I just wanted to kind of interject that, because what I'd like to do is include that in our inspection log. You know, if that's something that everyone wants us to now, um, have, um, you know, that inspection log is really good for. Um, you know, alerting everyone what, you know, what the, the required inspections are. So if a shower pan is something you'd like to add, I just wanted to kind of add that into tonight's discussion. Jerry, is that something you want us to add into the natural flow of inspections?
Yeah, and if you're going on subjects like that, we should also put the tile setter as a registered contractor. Along with the drywaller. So the tile setters need to register as contractors also. But yes, the shower pan is a very critical inspection, cause if it leaks, it leaks for years and years and it starts. Problems and it's in most jurisdictions.
Are you saying the general contractor for the project can't oversee the tile, you need a separate tile contractor?
We already do that in the wet spots.
What, we don't, we're.
No, we don't.
We're not.
I have to see the, the drywall in the showers, the Hardy Rock or whatever brand they use. And make sure the screws are right and, uh. The shower pan just kind of ties into that whole project.
You're not, you're not saying that he's gotta, that, the tile guy has to get contractor license, are you?
Well, yes, I think he should be right along with the drywaller here. Because everybody up here is now custom showers. That we don't hardly see any fiberglass inserts.
And the general contractor can't be that person?
Yes. I wouldn't, um, hope, um, just to say the way, at least Jerry, I'm not trying to, to step on this, but at the same time. If, if the general contractor is overseeing the installation, I think the only time, and even with drywall. You know, the only time is if somebody comes in to pull a drywall, well, a building permit to install drywall and they're not listed and they're not. Registered as a drywall car, uh, or a general contractor, then they can pull, um, licensing, uh, registration under drywall. But.
Well, that, that, that's beside the point, we can talk about that later, but the shower pan should be inspected when it's a custom built shower pan.
I, I agree, your shower pan should be inspected, we wanna make sure those don't leak.
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah.
But we can talk about the tile setter later, but, uh, every time you have somebody working in the county who's a good contractor or a bad contractor. At least you've got his phone number and his email when they register and it's fifty bucks a year. So, yeah, the shower pan was the main point there.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to the next section, temporary occupancy. Uh, building official is authorized to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. I think I just changed the spelling of the word or something deleted there, but, um, anyway, uh, and added item number eight. Uh, cause we're going through different, you know, your electrical system needs to be complete and your egress windows need to have some heat. And, you know, place needs to be watertight and handrails and guardrails, life safety stuff, uh, basically. And number eight just says, all life safety systems as determined by the building official are determined to be in place. If, you know, someone needs to be able to live there and, and not be in danger, usually there's, there's other items. Landscaping because of winter or, or things like that that aren't in place, but if it's a life safety system, then it should be. I realize there's some judgment with that, I don't know, uh, if, if there's been issues with judgment on life safety, usually those are pretty important things.
We had a note on here prior that said the TCO fee was one fifty for that, I don't know if that's relevant now, but.
Have we got the TCO fees in the fee resolution at the end of the document? Okay, so we'll, we can hit that then. Uh, okay, one twelve point one, uh, following paragraph, okay. This is provisions of resolution ninety-seven forty-three, this must be. Uh, this sounds like the same wording we had up in the IBC. Shall govern appeals from the decision of the building official, resolution provides for a board of review in lieu of the board of appeals, so we're keeping that the same. And then section two oh two definitions was amended by adding the definition of a bedroom. Uh, I, I am not in favor of having a definition of, and I am nobody, I'm just here to present ideas. So you, you guys can decide, I'm not in favor of, of having a definition for a bedroom. It's, it was listed as a room which is designed as a sleeping room in group or occupancies or a room or area that can be used as a sleeping room. It contains a closet, well, you can pretty much sleep anywhere, you know, you can sleep, if I fall asleep in the living room, does that mean I now have to call that a bedroom? Because I, I, I can use it as a sleeping room, uh, you know, it just, there's nothing in the code. That's why the code doesn't have a definition for a bedroom.
I tried submitting one once and I got at the mic and got tortured at the hearings on it. The other thing is, if, if you do keep the definition in there, you're gonna need to remove that group R occupancies. Because in the IRC, there are no occupancy classifications. Just my two.
Yep, so it's, it becomes very subjective when, when you have, you know, your niece and nephew over for the weekend. And they throw out the sleeping bags on the living room floor or on the rec room floor downstairs and it's like, well, it had a closet. And it, 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 it could be used as sleeping, so you need to put in an egress window and you need to put in smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. And people are going, come on.
And I think this originally came up years ago, there were some issues with bedrooms and basements whatnot, so that's why they added this. But I'm in favor of removing it, cause it seems dangerous to me.
Well, what we typically do is we look at the plan, if it's labeled a bedroom, we make sure it has a, uh, you know, the, the safety features. That a bedroom is supposed to have, if it's labeled an office, and, you know, maybe it's got a closet, but it's got floor to ceiling shelving for your paper. And your printer goods and everything like that, that's, you know, usually handled on a case by case basis. But, but if someone wants to lie on the document and say, this is, uh, you know, some other use. And then they put a bed and everything in there, if there's any ever a fire or whatever, some damage. And it comes back and you get lawsuit, we're gonna produce the document we got that we went by and it says, oh, that was supposed to be an office, it is not a bedroom.
Yeah. When they come back and see that we've added definitions, uh, I could just go the wrong way on, on any potential liability.
Yeah. Okay, so Hope, I'm gonna let you explain this, uh, table, the changes, uh, the change of tables.
Sorry, I forget, sometimes I'm muted. Uh, so with this table, uh, what happened is it, it was originally, as you see at the top. It had, you know, all the additional information. What came about is the second part or the lower half of that table that includes the design criteria for manual J's. It becomes, you know, just as the architect goes to this particular table to find out all the pertinent information. They need to be able to design the home, um, in accordance to, you know, the, the items that you have adopted. That's what this table does in, uh, having the readily available information for manual J design criteria. So whoever is doing the manual J can go to one location and knows exactly what the, the county is expecting. And requiring to be placed on the manual J's, so that all the, the pertinent information, like your, uh, you know. Heating and cooling temperatures are, are correct for, for your location. And so that's what this table is.
Um, and, and that's awesome, thanks, Hope, and, and other minor things like you'll see in the old red table up above this. The wind speed said ninety, well, it's a hundred and fifteen now, it doesn't mean it's gotten windier, it just means they're measuring it differently now than they used to. Um, but otherwise, things are pretty much copied from up above down onto that line, so not really any changes there. Um, other than that new manual J criteria, which is meant to be helpful to the designers. Okay, now I saw snow loads there, okay, snow load value is determined by the data in appendix E of this resolution. So we've, we've apparently had snow load values for quite a long time and we're continuing that. Um, just indicating that the appendix is in the resolution, all right, next page. Uh, mechanical, so we had the mechanical ventilation in years past and we just had a, an agenda, sorry, amendment. That said, delete that section. Now. We, at first, we said, no, we're, we're gonna go with mechanical ventilation in a new code has house, house ventilation. Um, and then we said, but we'll make a phased in approach. And so I added that sentence, the provisions adopted here will be enforced with a phased in approach as part of a phasing schedule to be specified in a building department policy. And then I think Paul and Anne and I talked about it and said, you know, maybe we don't need that, that sentence in there. If it's a policy, then, you know, that's not what the commissioners are adopting, they're, they're, they're just adopting the code and amendments to it. If, if there is a phased in plan that's gonna be come up with, then, then that shouldn't really be in the adoption. And we've done the same thing with other cities that we helped, where we said, you know, we're adopting the energy code. Or we're adopting whole house mech- mechanical ventilation, uh, and the fact that we enforce it in a phased in system. Doesn't need to be in our, our adoption documents.
But question on that, because that particular, you're, you're talking about a phased in approach and that's, I'm, I'm assuming you're referring to the blower door test, which is not in this section. This section is referring to the requirement for the whole house mechanical ventilation.
Right, that's.
And so you're wanting to do a phased in approach for the whole house mechanical ventilation?
Well. Ann and Paul had wanted to provide the builders with the option of phasing in anything new with energy. Now, mechanical ventilation is not blower doors. I totally agree. And we're just talking about house, whole house mechanical ventilation here. Maybe that's part of the phased in part that, part of the phasing. Or, or maybe it's not. I think either way you get rid of that whole section, you know, down a little bit there. You get rid of that whole thing and, and we're not deleting mechanical ventilation anymore. We're, we're going with it now, whether you incorporate people doing it as part of a phased in approach or not is up to whoever's writing the phased in plan.
Say, go ahead and, and get rid of that. We, we need mechanical ventilation. It's critical. Any ambiguity around there is detrimental to, you know, long-term building durability.
It is.
Quality.
Agreed.
Issues.
It's been pretty scary having tight houses and no ventilation. That's just been one of those things where we go, whoa, this isn't good.
Yeah. Considering you guys are already building tight up there. Not having that ventilation is just creating a hazard, a health hazard for you guys. Well, other hazards too, but yeah.
So Ann, I would say just, just take out that or just take out that whole, take out that added sentence. We don't need that. And and then just delete that whole line three oh three point four mechanical ventilation and delete this section. Just get, get rid of that whole thing. It's no longer needed. You there, Ann? She must be, it's scrolling. Okay, townhouse automatic fire sprinkler systems. Three fifteen point two point two. Alterations, repairs and additions. Let's see, three fifteen two two is something about sprinklers and I forget what. Three fifteen two two. So, oh, this is carbon monoxide alarms, not sprinklers. Okay. Three fifteen. So alterations, repairs and additions. Oh, I remember what this is. So the, the way the code is worded, it says, if you're doing an alteration or a repair or an addition, then the dwelling unit has to have carbon monoxide alarms, just like if it was a new house. Okay, no problem with that. Exception number one, if you're doing work involving the exterior surface, like roofing, siding, windows, doors, or the addition of a porch or deck, or it's all outside, contractor has no access to the inside, he's never inside, then you don't have to do carbon monoxide alarms. The second exception says installation alteration or repairs of plumbing or mechanical systems. And so basically if you change out a furnace or a water heater, that's mechanical and plumbing, you don't have to do carbon monoxide alarms. Well, that just really goes against the grain of code officials who go, that's the perfect time to put in a carbon monoxide alarm is when you're, you've got gas appliances and you're changing them out. Man, that's the time to put them in and, and most people don't have an issue with it. So that was my two, two cents on getting rid of that exception, but you guys may feel differently.
I, I was under the impression, and this is based on weatherization work that I've been involved with, that they were putting them in, but they might've just been used to that from another county and they do it as a best practice.
Right.
And when they change out a furnace.
I think that's what's happening.
I've had, I've had some people argue with that, but I think that goes back to the state law.
Does.
I think we can fall on Colorado that be more stringent than what our ICC code is.
Yep. State law requires not, you know, fifteen, within fifteen feet of a bedroom door. And in fact, anytime you, you rent out your house, there's all kinds of things in the state law. So this would agree with state law as well by doing this. So that's what that exception two is. It would, it would just keep putting in the carbon monoxide alarms if you're doing plumbing and mechanical and repairs.
Basically every time you pull a permit on the interior of the house, you have to have smokes and seals.
That's right, right. Yeah. Okay, so chapter six, wall construction. Yeah, can we scroll down just a little because the rest of it is there. So the way this had been worded before was it was referring, this is for log homes. And in single family dwellings of log construction, the walls have to be graded. Single family dwellings of log construction, all structural log shall be selected from published log span tables from the Canadian log builders, all this stuff. All that stuff is now in the standard that you have to follow anyway. There's a standard for log homes, ICC four hundred, I think it is. I've got a copy. It's about an eighth of an inch thick. It's not that big. They've got all those tables. They say in there that it has to be graded. All that stuff that we used to require is now in the standard that you got to follow anyway. If Ann wants to pick up a copy of that standard to have at the counter, that, that might be helpful. I think it's thirty, forty bucks or something, but anyway, so that's why we're deleting that is it's already covered. Okay, energy efficiency, chapter eleven, testing. And, and so we said, well, delete this section because that, that's what we used to say was delete the section on testing on blower doors. Now we're getting rid of that. So that we would be taking on blower door testing. I would say get rid of my sentence that says it's going to be phased in approach again and just and let that be a decision of the building department under a policy if they approach that with a phasing schedule. I think, I think we just delete that whole thing.
That makes sense to me. I don't think we want that written in permanently, but I would like to see what that policy looks like so that we're clear on, on that. However, that's going to work.
Yes, we wrote one for Los Anamis County and Hope, have you done one for Lake County?
I, I haven't yet. I was waiting for our meeting to find out if you were still thinking of doing a phased approach on things. Or not, where I could see it maybe, you know, being something, because the great thing is I've had the opportunity to look at your plans and be out in the field with you guys. And you guys are doing a great job in doing this anyway. So I, I'm not sure how you want the, the policy to be written, because what you guys would have compared to Los Anamis County would be night and day difference. As far as what that policy would look like. So I was waiting to have that kind of conversation with you.
Those guys have done nothing in Los Anamis. They don't even know what an energy code book looks like pretty much. So, so it was a long and involved step-by-step process. You, you guys don't need that long of a process. And, and whether you need a phasing approach at all is, is up, up to you all and, and to Ann to, to discuss if, if you feel you're ninety percent of the way there already.
I, I, I'd like to make a suggestion on this topic and it has, it's coming a little bit, I think from the twenty twenty-one IBC, which has a provision for commercial buildings. Where if you don't need the required air tightness, basically what you're going to be asked to do is have someone like myself come and identify air leaks and then you make a, you know, a good faith effort to repair those and then you move on. So it's not going to hold people, it's not going to prevent the building from ever getting permitted. And it won't have to get rebuilt, but you have to make a good effort to air seal, right, Hope?
Cameron, you and I are kind of thinking on the, the same page because that's what I just had a, a class that I was teaching on that today where I talked about all the great benefits of that, that section, because I, I think when, because you're used to, while a lot of you guys are already doing blower door tests because you understand it, there's going to be those ones that are, are, you know, stepping into it type of deal. And I think that type of, of wording would be an excellent way of getting it. When you don't need it, here are the things that you can do. I, I love it. The other suggestion I might make is again, taking some wording out of the twenty twenty-one, but bringing in the new testing metric. Where you can either do the three air changes an hour or you're utilizing the CFM per square foot. Because that, the CFM per square foot takes into account those smaller homes. So if they're fifteen hundred square feet or less, where there's less volume available, it, it puts them more on a, an, you know, maybe maybe not a golden delicious and a golden delicious apple, but maybe a honey crisp and a golden delicious apple. They're, they're still somewhat comparable.
And, and using stuff out of the twenty twenty-one code is simply just an alternate method that the building official can do. You can, if, if you have one where you're failing and you just can't get it done, submit a request to the building official for alternate method use of that section of the twenty twenty-one code so that they can put that into the file as to why, why we did it a different way. In other words, I guess what I'm saying is I don't think we need to put anything into our adoption here for it. There's always the option for alternate methods and twenty twenty-one's got some good, good spots that you could pull from. So fifteen oh seven mechanical ventilation. We're just going to get rid of that sentence and get rid of the whole thing and just don't even talk about it. We're, we're doing mechanical ventilation and we're following the code. And unless you need some special dispensation.
And just one, one thing that we talked about that I don't see in here was the U value on windows. And I think you kind of speak to that by saying that someone can look to the twenty twenty-one codes and meet those, but I don't know if that should be clarified. I mean, I'd love to get some more information on. It, it seems to me that maybe some issues that people are running into in twenty eighteen are, are resolved in twenty twenty-one. So I could really use some education on what we could use out of that to maybe avoid some heartache.
Now, are you referring to the U factor because of the elevation and that new footnote that came in out of the?
Yeah, that. And then what you were just talking about with, with the blower door testing, you know, some new insight, I think that seems to be in twenty twenty-one that that could give some flexibility, maybe.
Yes. So in the, the twenty twenty-one, it does have where the U factor takes into account where right now it would be the point three O. That's required, but for elevations above four thousand square feet or and four thousand feet above sea level, you get to utilize a point three two because of the understanding that because you're so high up, the elevation affects the gases that are utilized and you guys are even at a, a, you know, more affected elevation for that. So yes, that is in the, the twenty twenty-one to recognize that issue. That is something that we could pull over into that with the understanding that the current res check would still have the requirement in there of the point three two, or I'm sorry, yes. Sorry, I've been in three different editions today that I'm getting my numbers mixed up. So give me just a moment here. For seven, you are required to have point three. Oh, so you, you are still required to have the point three O. So with that, with that footnote, if you wanted to put that in there, you could adjust the point three O with a point three two out how it's listed in the twenty twenty-one. Just you have to recognize the fact that res check is not going to accommodate for the fact that you're allowing that. So there may be.
What about an alternative option of doing res check on twenty twenty-one?
You don't want to do that. I'm sorry, for the windows, it would be great, but you now would have to have like the R thirty in the walls and the continuous insulation going on. So for the window type of deal, I, I think, you know, depending on the, the project, there may be other ways that, that, you know, could be accommodated for that or. Hmm, I'm trying to think when I get a, a failed report, when I get a failed report, doesn't it show where the failure happens? Isn't that correct, Cameron? Like when you go into res check itself and you pull that report, it'll say this does not comply with the code. So it might be something.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, maybe it's just on the prescriptive. If, if someone's going with prescriptive method, then then they're offered that option.
You, you could do that and, and you have that, you know, because if you go into, you know, some of those other sections, it talks about, you know, you can change your R value for your ceiling to an R, from an R forty-nine to an R thirty-eight, if it extends over that top plate, you know. I mean, you're basically using a, a raised heel trust that you have that option for that. But in there it says you cannot utilize the U factor alternative or the total UA compliance path. So you could put in there something, you know, like maybe a footnote that, you know, an R or I'm sorry, a U point three two can be permitted if utilizing the insulation and fenestration prescriptive path.
I like that.
Yeah, but I, you know, I just want to bring up a point that probably seventy-five percent of our plans come in with a rest check. And so those, that's the information on how to, you know, that's, that's just going to be a little bit of a gap for a while. As people, you mean, this group is great to know that, but I, I already see we're going to have, you know, we're going to need to make sure that we're offering, we're making sure we're really embracing our community with some good education.
Oh, yeah. The good news, Ann, is you know, somebody who can give you some free training.
But by the way, there are windows that now that deal with the high, high elevation problem. Alpen windows here in Colorado being one of them. So unfortunately there's not a lot of options, but you know, there is a brand that don't let the other window manufacturers tell you otherwise.
But Cameron, you know, I'm, I'm hearing from contractors, you know, windows are six months out and they're hard to get. And so when I hear there's one, there's one manufacturer that might be.
It's true. It's the problem. And that company has had problems as well with, with delays for sure. But by the way, folks, we are at ten minutes to go here. And Dan, I imagine you have quite a few more changes to get through. Dan, can you join us at another time?
Absolutely. You sure can, Cameron. We're on whatever pay. Okay, we finished the first nine pages. I, she's got control of documents. I don't know how many pages there are, but you're right. We've got more to cover and we might be trying to rush it. It'd be better to do it, to finish this up at another meeting if you, if you want to set one.
Well, I, I think that might be good. We want to take a few minutes here to see if there's anything pressing we need to deal with right now. Yeah. How's everybody feeling about that? Is this a good stopping point for the moment?
Can I ask a question, Cameron?
Please.
Um, are we still board members or I, I know I missed the beginning. I was delivering a building analyst training all day. So it didn't end until five.
Some of us who are up for renewal, we're actually not, not up for renewal until the fall. I think one is currently good. We, we're welcoming Matt Bullock as an alternative, although he didn't make it tonight. And Luke is going to be our chair, chairman going forward with Ethan as our vice chair.
Awesome. Congrats. Congrats.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, I see one more thing under new business called uh. Inspection review, is that how many building permits and how much? Reports we've done and how many inspections we've done and what the revenue we brought in?
No, Jerry, that was, that was actually to um, talk about your shower pan inspection that you'd like to include, but um, that's a good point. I'm happy to bring that. Send, uh, we do monthly reports. I think that Paul has probably sent those. Out to everyone um, monthly and we will be continuing those. And so I will send those out to everyone. Um, uh, we'll get the Jan, the January one out to you very shortly.
Okay, well, I was just confused on what it was and I'm easily confused, so. All right, you guys have good evening.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Hey, Ann, real quick, in our, the comments that are showing up as Paul Clarkson, is that actually you?
Some of them are Paul, some of them are mine, yeah.
These are previous comments that Paul had made.
Comments. And this is the, this is the same, um, he sent you all of these. I can resend that email. I have access to it if you wanna see them, but. Actually, I'll probably resend it with the new ones. I, I'll go through with Dan, delete. Um, the things that we've decided to go ahead and delete and then just highlight. So for the next meeting. Um, before I'll have a packet created with these new action items.
So can we do a, a meeting in two weeks' time, everyone? Is that okay? Um, we need to be on a little expedited track here, I think, to get through this.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Is this time good for everybody? Wednesdays at four to six? Or Tues- excuse me, Tuesdays, four to six?
Sure.
Yeah, it's fine with me. Uh, that makes more sense now when I see it says Paul Clarkson and it's in blue and we saw words that were blue and I was like, okay. That's who put those little words in there.
Well, well.
All right, you guys have good evening.
Okay. Night, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. And thanks to Dan and Hope Medina for joining us. We were.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
To help out.
All your work on this.
Yep.
Glad to see you all.
Okay, so Ann, you're gonna uh, set up a meeting and send it all out, the announcements and everything?
Yep, I'll do a meeting in two weeks um, for Tuesday evening, four to six. And I'll send out um, updates from tonight and where we left off and where we can reconvene.
Thank you, Ann.
Sure.
And Cameron, if there's anything I didn't be doing as, as the new chair in the meantime, just let me know. This is, this is new for me, so.
I, I think uh, you know, you just, just um, if people are forgetting, you just text them and. Just keep our, keep our momentum going, Luke. I don't think it's anything too special, but. You do get the honorific of opening the meeting and. Um, influencing it in your own way that you see fit, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks for stepping up there.
Yeah.
Right.
Very good. Well, uh. Let's see, we, we've got five minutes to go, but I don't know if it makes sense to start anything else, so we may want to adjourn. Does that sound, sound okay to you, Ann? All right, can I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, talk soon, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks. We'll see you.
Thanks, everyone.
Goodbye.
Thanks.
Do we get everything, Ann? I mean, I know we didn't get everything, but.
Yeah, I think um, we got through. Um, I, you know, I, I. I think we made some good headway on the review and now I think we have some good track notes, so we can just keep this momentum going. And I think, you know, it's gonna be real important to just keep moving towards the goal and keep this timeframe, you know, real focused. Um, it's great that we have Hope and Dan supporting the process too. Um, it'll give us all a lot of confidence and, and just. Um, you know, their expertise and, and being there and done that kind of thing, so.
And I will get you that language from the um, twenty twenty-one code that discusses sort of remediation of. Failed blower door test because I think it might be useful to you. It gives people a path forward. Uh, they fail so that they're not like penalized forever, like. You know, they can, they can make some efforts to, to improve it and then move on.
That sounds great. That sounds better than a phased approach. That sounds like a better. Um, you know, some kind of method to help support this, so that sounds great. I thought, or did, to hearing that, so that's great.
There's actually um, something, if you wanna see something similarly typed up for duct testing in California, it's the. Did the best job I can. And it's.
Talking about.
Because it's a duct test, but yeah, the same type of thing with an infrared scan would, would um. Would help. I mean, I would love to even see that at the, oh, you know, roughen. On some, you know, just earlier, so they, before they close everything up, they know where the opportunity is. Um, because the infrared camera can show places. But they can be very expensive to repair or even get to, to air seal and stuff, so.
No, that sounds great. That sounds great. Yes, thank you so much for that information so that I can share it out to the community. So thank you.
I'll get that to you soon.
All right, have a great evening. Thanks so much, everybody.
Take care.
Sorry, I missed you guys.
No worries.
And I hope you are reinstated for another three-year term.
Oh, I am, okay. I just didn't know the process or anything or whatever, what I went out, anything, so.
Yep, we um, we started, uh, we just talked about it at the beginning, so you just missed that part, but the board made um, major appointment yesterday.
Oh, okay, awesome. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know when I signed on, so I didn't know my beginning date, so I wouldn't know where to, where it went from, but thank you so much. And uh, yeah, I know I'm an, I'm an abrupt communicator. It's just, I'm from Chicago. I'm very blunt and to the point, so. No offense to that. I just get to the, I just figure no one has time for candy coating things, so I kinda just get to it, but.
No worries, no worries. I, I completely understand that and I, and appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you. I'll talk to you guys soon.
Okay, bye-bye.